At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for May 20th, 2014, 5:00 PM order. First item on the agenda is consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second?
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 2A, consider a motion approving issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm area Catholic schools to conduct raffles gambling.
I'll offer that motion.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Today's our August 7th and September 25th. See none. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 2B, consider a motion approving issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Church of St. Mary's to conduct a bingo raffle, paddle wheel pull tabs, and tipboard gambling.
I'll offer the motion.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? That's for Sunday, September 28th. See none. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 2C, consider a motion approving the issuance of a liquor license for the period of July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015.
I'll offer the motion.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 2D, consider a motion approving the issuance of a temporary on sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Cathedral of Holy Trinity.
I'll offer the motion.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. That was for June 22nd, 2014. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 3A, from the Safety Commission recommending sidewalk installation at selected locations. Anything on that, Kayla?
Mr. President, the New Ulm Safety Commission is recommending that the city council order in approximately 260 feet of sidewalk on the west side of South Broadway. You've got a little map in there, basically from Burger King south to the new apartment complex where the apartment, the developer already constructed a sidewalk. So it's a rather high-traffic area, and there's certainly some safety concerns with someone crossing other than at 20th South. So if you elect to do that, we'll send out notices and hold a public hearing in the near future.
I'll offer a motion for that recommendation.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Like you said, that's a real dangerous area. I've seen, just recently seen some people that were walking on the street, and I was like, yikes.
Yikes.
So...
No, people have to be able to walk around, so...
No more discussion? Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 4A, 1 and 2, consider an ordinance amending section 9.12 of the city code, the city of New Ulm, relative to noise standards in said city. Number 1, second reading of ordinance number 14-117, fourth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number 14-117, fourth series.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to waive the second reading of that ordinance, and also to adopt the ordinance 14-117, fourth series.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Oh, then this was just simply the changes to the noise ordinance that we read into the record last time, so...
Okay. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5B, consider motion to schedule a joint city council Public Utility Commission information meeting to discuss the auditing financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2013, for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014, at 4:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Good.
See none. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5B, consider resolution to accept the donations from grain bin rescue kit from United Farmers Co-op.
I'll offer the motion.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Just that's a valuable donation, $2,800 or so. Certainly, it's well worth having on, available for our fire department.
And I'll just say, it's a wonderful tool to have. I think we've all lost people close to us in these sorts of situations. Really appreciate it.
More discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5C, consider resolution to accept donations offered to the city for the Park and Rec Department.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading.
Maybe a part of the reading. I'd certainly go through those without me too.
Go ahead.
$2,381 for the gravel pit, or excuse me, for gravel parking lot out at the dog park from M&amp;R paving, $127 in cash from the Church of Cash event, $100 cash from Charles and Barb Bornhoff, $15 cash from Tim and Mary Ann Juan, $94.82 for one-time in-kind service for the dumpster. This is all having to do with the dog park development. For the recreation center, $862.80, one-time in-kind annual television service from New Ulm Telecom. And programs, $500 cash from New Ulm Real Estate for the annual Easter egg hunt, $1,000 in cash from New Ulm Medical Center, Division of Alina Health for the Park X program, $300 of those new soccer balls from Farmers Co-op of Hanska. German Park was a $100 cash donation from Patricia Rogers in memory of Don and Marilyn Raywitzer. So thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5D, consider resolution authorizing application for an occupational safety health administration safety grant.
I'll offer the resolution.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about what this is all about.
Tom?
Tom Schmitz from the Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz, counselors, this is a request that the Park and Recreation Commission forwarded to you to authorize application for an OSHA grant to at least purchase a glass handling piece of equipment for the civic center. Regularly, a few times a year, we have to remove the hockey rink board glass and then reinstall it at a later date, and it's a very difficult, dangerous process that manual labor staff has had to do in the past. And this piece of equipment is used worldwide in ice rinks for this purpose, and this is an opportunity to have half of it paid for by an OSHA grant. Further, the department, if you authorize, will further consider other potential safety purchases and talk to other department heads to find out if we want to pool a grant to get the maximum award of $10,000. And then the city and other departments would come up with the remaining 10 for a total of $20,000 worth of safety equipment.
Thank you.
And it does appear from your information on here that there has been some staff injuries for manually lifting these in the past, which certainly can add, doesn't take very long for one of those injuries to cost $10,000. So I certainly support it.
Any more questions? No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5E, consider resolution authorizing application to IMT Group for the Dog Park Grant.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Applying for $500?
It's a $500 grant. Specifically, it's going to be written for dog park playground equipment, I think is the right term. I think. That's the right term.
You're not having enough fun down there yet.
But we're going to try it.
Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5F, consider resolution authorizing application for a healthy activity grant up to $1,000 as part of the Alina Neighborhood Health Connection Program.
I'll offer the resolution, waive reading.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Any discussion?
Awesome. Good activities.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what we've got in mind here.
Tom Schmitz from the Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz, counselors, this is a program that Alina has offered from time to time in the past to improve neighborhood health and fitness. And we've got a number of different programs and activities in mind, including the ones on the action sheet there below, such as yoga or zumba in the parks, family scavenger hunts, and we've got a lot of different potential health and fitness activities that would, this money could go to.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5G, consider resolution authorizing overnight use and camping in South German Park for the BMX event, which is...
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second?
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. And nights are like, I would assume, the 18th and 19th of July.
And we've done this in the past, so...
Yes.
I haven't heard any complaints of it, so...
Right, and I don't think this is any different than we've done in the past. All right, good.
See no more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5H, consider resolution to approve an agreement with the Canadian Pacific Railroad to renew the railroad surface crossing at 20th South Street.
I'll offer that resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Sounds like we don't have a choice.
No.
I read it.
Steve, is there any thing that'll, in between the tracks? I mean, they just patched it, and within two weeks, we had chunks out of there again. Do you know is there anything that could adhere, or...
I believe they probably used what we call cold mix, so now they could probably get some hot mix. But it's concrete, and it's different surfaces and materials. But I can ask them to do that again. This will, this will help if we get this replacement scheduled, and they'll probably come and do that, yeah. That's the oldest surface crossing I think we have on the main line, so it's in pretty bad shape, yeah.
I've had complaints from that intersection.
Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5I, consider request from Ken and Cesar Cristo, I should say, DeLeo to reduce the special assessment amount from $5,000 per lot on lots 12, 13, 14, Block 4, Dakota West Edition. Mr. Gromit?
Mr. President, city council members, as you're well aware of, the Dakota West subdivision went into tax forfeiture to the county. We work with county staff with a process to sell off individual lots, either in bulk, you know, seven, eight lots in a package, or one at a time. A few lots have been sold and homes constructed on them, and that was through the county with the understanding that the assessments would be paid at full value minus the cost of the lot that they paid. Because any money the county gets, they'll give to us to help pay off the assessments. A developer came in, wanted to buy 20 lots in bulk. The city council reviewed his proposal, and after negotiations, I believe it was $7,500 a lot was paid to the county to purchase the property, and $4,000 per lot was the assessments. So the city would get $11,005 per lot to help pay off the assessments. That runs approximately a 50% reduction when you add all the revenue compared to the expenses, so a 50% reduction. That action has taken place. That developer did purchase the property, and the assessments will come in as he builds homes and sells them, and people move into them. Or five years, whichever comes first. The request before you is, Mr. and Mrs. DeLeo would like to purchase three lots, lots 12, 13, and 14 in Block 4 of the subdivision. Their purchase price is not $7,500, it's $12,000 per lot that will go to the county, and then ultimately back to the city of New Ulm. And the special assessments are listed at $25,922 per lot for a total of $77,766. If you add those two together, you basically end up with 113, almost $114,000. Seven, ten, yeah, about $114,000. The DeLeos are requesting a reduction in the special assessments of $25,922 down to $5,000 per lot, or a total of $15,000 for all three lots. So you get $50,000 versus the 77. That currently is on deferred assessment, if you want to call it that. So they're asking for consideration. As you have on the issue sheet, reflects the Kroll construction proposal and how that computed out to roughly, you know, maybe it's .54 cents on the dollar, that the city is going to be able to recoup to pay the assessments. Should note that under the primary issues and alternatives to consider, that eight lots are currently paying the full assessment
Right.
of $25,922 per lot. And that reflects the stage at which they purchased and acquired their lots. And it also reflects that they might have bought one lot as compared to the Kroll construction who bought 20 in bulk, a large number at one time. So with that in mind, you'll notice that the budgetary fiscal issues is we're looking at $36,000 for the lot and $15,000 for the, for the assessments. If you subtract that from the $77,766 in assessments, you know, we'd be out almost $27,000. Am I reading that right? Yes. So you have a proposal, Mr. and Mrs. DeLeo, you have correspondence, and you have a map reflecting the lots they wish to acquire, which I believe are the yellow lots.
Couple of questions that I have. In the letter from DeLeo, as they talk about would like to purchase lots 12, 13, and 14, is that their intent, or is it, I certainly wouldn't want to vote on a lower assessment on three lots if they're not intending to buy all three. I know they're here, but maybe that depends on what the price would be, but...
There'd be a question for Mr. DeLeo.
State your name and address for the record, then. Up here?
Yep.
Ken DeLeo, 811 North State, New Ulm, Minnesota.
Do you intend to buy all three lots?
Yes.
It is. Okay, because I just want to make sure on there.
Yes. We have Plan B, C, and D, but Plan A is to buy all three lots.
With one house on all three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my questions.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just struggling to understand why, what would be the acreage of this, of these three lots?
About an acre.
So would that make you the, would that be the largest lot then in the addition? Just wondering.
Well, I think with all three, do you want my wife up here?
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay. With all three, I'm not sure, but maybe.
Okay, yeah, I think so.
There are property owners on the cul-de-sac on the left side of the map where two lots split the middle lot.
Oh, right.
And so there are one and a half lots in size, and fortunately, you don't see the topography with a map like this, but
Right.
the DeLeo's proposed purchase would be flat, and the cul-de-sac lots drop off rather fast after you get past the construction site of the house.
And then I just want to make sure I'm reading this map correctly. Each one of the blue lots is sold, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they're paying the $25,000 per lot assessment.
Right. And then each one of the orange lots are, that's the lots that Mr. Kroll bought.
Kroll construction purchase, correct.
And he was going to do twin homes, but now he's going to do regular homes, or...
That's my understanding.
Understanding. And then the red lots are, remain unsold?
Correct.
Right. So there's still one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots that remain unsold? All right.
Six, huh?
Yeah, I think the original...
Am I just counting wrong?
No, I think you got it right. You got eight.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, correct.
Yeah, there's two down there on the bottom. There's two down there on the bottom.
I think if you look back to the Kroll construction, you know, the reasons that were verbalized at that meeting was there wasn't a lot of interest in buyers, so the action of the city council was to stimulate development. And it was, I think, so far it's been successful because there's more people looking to build out there. The other item that was verbalized was the developer was coming in and buying 20 lots. It was a big bulky purchase. The land purchase itself was, I believe, $280,000. So it was a big commitment. And so, you know, those were the, I think, the primary reasons why the city council verbalized why they did what they did at that point in time. And I guess it's up to the city council to decide whether or not those reasons are still valid for any other questions.
And I think, just speaking for myself, one of the things that I thought at the time was that, that row of, the row of lots that were up for sale for Mr. Kroll were probably the least desirable lots and the least likely to be sold one at a time. So that was another, that was another reason for, for reducing that. And to tell you, I'm just concerned, I'm concerned with the homeowners that are, are, and will continue to pay the full assessments here. I'm just, I'm worried about the fairness. If we've got one family buying, you know, building one house, and it just doesn't seem fair to me. It really doesn't.
In my, I kind of feel the same way, and also, I think if you're going to start reducing lot assessments, that it should be open to the public, and everybody should have a fair chance at those lots if we're, if that's, if our desire is to get rid of them. And I kind of questioned that when we did the Kroll purchase also, because is that fair to the others that are paying? But, and I understand why we did that, because it was such a bulk purchase. And there's a lot of lots out there, and some of them weren't real conducive to the building size. But I think if we do something like this, it has to be opened up to everybody, and then anybody that wants to purchase that lot. Then you, then you'd have a competition as far as bidding on those lots and recouping more. But I think just to reduce, because somebody, one individual asks, we're just opening up to, to more of the same. And then how do you justify those that are painful?
What you're saying is correct, but the lots are open to anybody. Anybody can come in. The only thing is they'd have to come back to us and ask for a reduction in the assessments. But I think what we did when we did it was to stimulate the growth out there. I think it worked. And that's what the object was for, is to get those lots back on the tax roll. And I think it's worked. And I don't think at that time we considered changing the amount for everyone. If we change it for these three, then we have to look at the next eight, the people that actually live there, to be honest, right now. So I guess I would talk against them myself.
I did look at our, you know, in the very first part of our report, we have the report on sales and lodging, and we have tripled the number of new homes that went in this month in comparison to last year. So we do have a starting of a building again after several years of recession. So part of it is, I think, maybe just because of what we just talked about, selling of those lots in bulk. I'd have to agree, as much as it, the unfairness of those folks that are paying that $25,000, that's, I have a hard time with that. And we've heard from a few of those folks after we even did the Kroll thing, saying, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're paying our share. And we're trying to recoup quite a bit of money in those assessments.
I think it's fair to say that any, you know, and I think everybody in the council knows that anything that is negotiated below the assessment rate, that's placed on all the taxpayers in the city.
Right.
Because we have to pay that debt off, and if it's not coming from these properties, it's coming from everybody.
Any more discussion? See none? I entertain a motion?
I move we deny the request of the DeLeos to reduce their special assessment amount to $5,000 per lot.
I second that.
We got a motion and a second to deny the request. Any more discussion?
My only comment would be that I could consider personally somewhat of a reduction, but not to that extent. And that's just my two cents.
Any more discussion?
We have Mr. DeLeo here.
Go ahead.
What amount were you thinking?
I think they'd have to give us a proposal, right?
Right.
Is that the correct procedure, Mr. Gromit?
That's correct. I mean, you could sit there and negotiate this thing out, and we could, you know, banter back and forth. But I think it'd be more reasonable to much, do much like you have, put forth a written proposal. I mean, it's up to the council how they want to, you know, conduct that. But typically, negotiating during a council meeting is not the preferred method.
No. Well, I understand this isn't eBay, but, you know... You're hearing what we're saying, so I think you're going to have to take that and come up with a better proposal.
Well, just speaking for myself, I, I'm not interested in that. You know, that's just speaking for myself. So, I mean, there's...
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way, and I think if we were going to reduce the assessments in that division, that we would have to do that for all, and then open it up to the public to, you know, then you, everybody has a fair shot at, at that.
Any more discussion? See none? Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 5J, consider resolution to accept monetary donations for the New Ulm Police Department Bicycle Helmet Safety Fair.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waived reading. The donations are Alliance Bank, $100 Midwest, or Bank Midwest, $60, Citizens Bank in New Ulm, or Citizens Bank, I should, Minnesota, $100, France and Bank and Trust, $60, and Physicians Group of New Ulm, $250. Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, resolution. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Now we have addendum item.
I'll offer a motion to suspend the rules for adding on the addendum.
We got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any more, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item 1, consider resolution to set a public hearing date for the finance program to issue... Item one, consider resolution to set a public hearing date for the finance program to issuance of a housing facility revenue bonds by the Economic Development Authority, the city of New Ulm, Minnesota, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11.5 million at the request of HADC Ridgway.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This will return later for action by the council on the underlying issue, just so you're aware of that. We're working with the, uh, Bond Council to put this project together.
Okay.
Okay.
This action just sets up the public hearing for the June 17th city council meeting.
Right, right. Okay.
See a nun, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business to be concluded, meeting adjourned.